I would like to call the National Board of Education Work Session to order. It is April 4th, and it is 6:34. And we're at the Nashua High Lecture Hall. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Ohensy?
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Porter?
Here.
I may have gone out of order because I'm doing it by memory, but...
Oh, here.
It wasn't on.
Thank you.
It's not here yet.
There's no book?
We have a quorum.
Okay.
Madam President.
Thank you. We're here to look at the request for information log and hopefully put something in place where we can determine what is the top priority and what will take longer to get the information on and maybe look at information, rank it according to priority. So, I'm hoping that we look closely at the communication log, the request for information, and can move through it. If everybody has their sheet that they got in their packet, we can go down at this point and just kind of look at what we have. The first thing is a copy of email sent by Dr. Mosley to the Board of Ed about badges and the right-to-know request. I believe Attorney Bolton is going to speak to that. So, I think that will be handled. I don't think that that will be a time-consuming thing. Hope not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second one was copy of resumes, credentials of Nashua High School North Principal candidates. That was done, so we can cross that off.
When you say cross off, I don't think anything should be deleted from the list, but I would make the suggestion that, you know, use the strike-through type to show that it has been dealt with. Keep the dates that show it was complete and maybe strike through it so we know that it's done, but it's no longer current. But I don't recommend that we delete any items. I think that would be a mistake.
Well, we can just write completed. Would that do for you?
Do we have a date? Isn't that enough?
Having done a lot of this stuff, I can tell you, especially when you start scanning a long list, when it's struck through, you know you don't have to deal with it. It's easier to skip. We could change it later on. You may understand what I'm talking about once you start working with it.
Got it.
Got it. So, what is your purpose in keeping it? Keeping every request? Like, would that be forever, you're keeping them?
Well, in the file, yeah. I imagine we generated... This is a... The way it's numbered is 1801. I'm guessing that's calendar year '01. So, for this session of the board, we're keeping all the requests. We have a list. These are all the things we did.
Where is that kept? I'm just...
Me, one moment, please. Could we wait and be recognized? This should be run like a regular Board of Ed meeting, so could you please raise your hand to be recognized?
So, thank you. So, I'm... It's a record of what we've done.
Okay.
So, that's just my recommendation.
Okay.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I'd like to concur with Mr. Kaufman. I think also part of the purpose of keeping the list is to keep track of what we've asked for versus what we haven't asked for. So, it would be nice to have a record to say, "Oh, yeah, we did ask for that last February. Here it is," you know, so that we don't end up asking for things more than once or have redundancies as we move along. So, that's all.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver, I believe you had your hand up.
Yeah, the only other point I would like to make is that if you keep that list, then you can say, "Hey, go look at that list and you can probably find what you want."
The next one...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. But I had asked Tara to provide a more readable copy, and she said she was going to print something and provide it tonight. So, did that... Okay, thank you. So, we have something a little bit more legible.
Yeah, I appreciate that, too.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll wait until those passed out.
You need a pen?
No.
Okay. The next item, one, the third one, was a request by Ms. Ohensy. Results of four Common Core State Standards competency assessments currently used for grades 1 through 8. Report card grades given to students for those same competencies. I guess I didn't quite understand exactly what you were looking for.
I withdrew that at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Because we lost our data analysts, and it was not going to be answered for a while.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I think the request is a little bit confusing to me because Common Core is not an assessment. Common Core is our standards. So, if we're looking for assessments, wouldn't that be something like iReady or something like that? So, I don't think that Common Core actually has assessments. Those are like standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
That... Well, just want to...
Okay.
Sback is the assessment for Common Core.
But we don't use that anymore.
Only starting this year, we're going to SAS from what I understand.
Right. Okay. The next request from February 22nd was from Ms. Van Twyver. It's request for information regarding the portable classroom at Elm Street regarding another application. Mr. Donovan, was that person responsible? You?
Yeah, I have that information. I'm not sure I passed it on to you, but...
No, you did not, sir.
Okay. But I do have it. I got it about a week or so ago.
All it was is the cost of what those...
Of a portable.
Of a portable which could potentially be used to house Brentwood.
Yes, that's what I thought you were getting at.
That was my question, why I asked that question.
Yeah, and it would be more than one to house Brentwood.
And, of course, installing them and getting them all set up, but...
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Ms. Oden. When will the board receive that?
Next week.
I'm sorry, but you just said you already had it.
Yeah, but if she wants to house Brentwood, I have to get the cost of more than one unit. I have to figure out what the cost is to hook it all up.
Okay, thank you.
I have basic information.
You have partial. Thank you.
Thank you. A request on... I'm sorry, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Will we be having a discussion about Brentwood? Can we put those all together?
Ms... Dr. Mosley?
Next board meeting, we'll have that discussion. We have all the information that's going on in your board packet on Friday.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. 225-18 request from Mr. Kaufman. Storage for board meeting videos to be archived. As I said, it was my understanding today at a meeting I went to earlier that that is available to us, and I forgot the gentleman's name. Dr. Mosley, do you begin with a C or a hard C or a K, I thought?
I can get that information to the entire board and send that out.
Okay.
I'll see if I can put it in the board packet by Friday.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Madam President, I have a question about that. Is it just the storage or are we going to get the videos, too?
It's my understanding that this gentleman keeps all of the information or videos and on a certain device or something. I don't really know what he keeps it on, but certainly we were talking to Lynn Alderman today, and he said, "Yeah, that's all stored with this person. We have that information. There's no need to have an additional one." Now, if the board wanted to explore hiring someone else to house their own board meetings and special videos, that would be up to the board. But there's, according to Lynn Alderman that we talked to today at Elm Street, that there's already someone who does that for the city.
Well, that was interesting because I was told that they were lost by Mr. Johnson. Okay, thank you.
I'm not... I don't know who this person is. It just was a conversation we were in today, and we were given the name, and we'll get that information out. Whether that's true or not or what his capacity is, I don't know, but it was just a conversation that Lynn Alderman was just trying to be helpful to us.
Mr. Kaufman, did you have a question?
No, I just want to point out, there was no additional labor cost involved surrounding this. It was just a matter of existing people copying a file over to a storage device. So, there's no people that need to be hired and maintained or anything like that, just for clarification.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I just... I'm curious about whether or not we're considering this kind of thing where we're now going to have a district employee do something. Is that a request or is that a directive to have the superintendent reassign staff to do something? Because as I'm going through these, that's one of the questions that I keep asking myself. Is this a request for information or a request for information about data storage? Or is it a directive to have the superintendent reallocate staff to then create a storage system?
Mr. Kaufman?
As I said, it's... Yes, to provide the service is really what's intended, but there is no real allocation of staff. In reality, Pete... Is it Pete Johnson? Pete Johnson is the fellow over at the community television area that would only have to take the file and copy it onto a device that's on the school district's network. From the information that Dr. Mosley just shared with us, it sounds like that storage capability exists at the city level, and now I think we need to find out how the board would copy its files into that environment for archival purposes. The only possible cost might be associated with providing links to it, but only that would be necessary if YouTube goes away because currently all our stuff is pushed up there anyway, and it's still available on community TV.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So, my follow-up question would be then, who would be the assigned person to carry out that task of, first of all, finding out from the city, and then, secondly, making sure that it was copied to the right place or copied to one of our own servers? I don't know what the decision is. So, that would be my follow-up question about that. Because that, to me, that's a task, not a request for information, so...
Dr. Mosley?
I just want to piggyback on what Ms. Raymond is saying. She is actually making a correct, asking the right questions. I'm going to give the information to the board, but I am not supervising this person. And this person, if that is his or her responsibility, if this person decides that they're busy for a week or two, who follows up on that? Am I giving that directive? And I don't want to speak for Ms. Raymond, but I think the question is, is the board now directing me to supervise people that might not be connected to the school system? And how much... Because that is actually a directive, if that's what I'm hearing correctly.
Mr. Johnson...
I'm sorry, Ms. Van Twyver?
Mr. Johnson, I believe, works for the city.
Yes, he...
Dr. Mosley?
He does. And Pete does, you know, a wonderful job volunteering, doing it in a timely manner as the best he can. But he is also responsible for other venues that are going on in the city and does not necessarily... Does not work for the board. And some of the things that he does for the board, sometimes we have some audio challenges here and some video challenges, he has been very helpful in giving the backup and supplying the additional information. But that's not... I'm not directing him to make sure that this happens. He just happens to be there to do it.
I understand that. Ms. Van Twyver?
Once we have the information about whether we can have the storage device, I think we ask the city, would they be willing to copy that stuff off for us? Do we ask the city to do it? Because I'm told that they belong to the city, and I was told that they didn't exist before. Again, they were gone before, that we couldn't have them. So, I think it's up to the city to let us know if they can do that for us.
Mr. Kaufman?
Since I proposed it, once we get the information from Dr. Mosley, I'm happy to follow up and find out the specifics and report back to the board, if that's okay.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with that? That sounds reasonable? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. The next request for information is 226. That's from Mr. Kaufman, and I believe that was provided. It was copies of his strategic plan proposal. The next item is from Mr. Kaufman on 226. Conduct a student survey to identify home computer resources and connectivity. I know that's been asked for before. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I have the same question as I did on the last one. Is this a request for information? Do we have this ability? Or is this a task that we're asking admin to now create a form, change a form, or direct staff to do something? And then, I guess my follow-up question to that is, if we are going to be making directives, should that come from an individual board member or a couple of board members? Should it be coming from a committee? Should it be coming from a majority of the board as a whole? By the way, I think this is a great question that we should have an answer to at some point. It would be really helpful. But how we go about doing it, I think, is important so that we have a clear process so that we don't get into a place where there's a question about priorities and there's a question about who's going to do what. Like, we should have a process.
Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. I believe this question was asked last... With the last board, and the majority wanted it, and it was put on the registration form. And I believe I saw one where there's a box to check. So, I thought at this point it was a matter of tabulating the responses to those forms because we're ordering online books and we're talking about students doing homework online. So, we needed to know last year, and the fastest the administration could promise to get it for us was last September when everybody re-registered it in August, and they would pull the data. And we still haven't gotten it. So, I think the data's out there. It just has to be tabulated, would be my guess.
Mr. Kaufman?
Another reason why we requested it was the Blizzard bags. We wanted to understand what the capabilities were of our students at home, so if there were electronic lessons, in the case of a Blizzard bag kind of situation, that the actual students at home could, in fact, perform the work requested of them. So, there was that piece of it. And then, there was also just to try and understand technology capacity, also to figure out how it would impact our network.
And could I just add to that? There was no way Dr. Mosley would have known this was asked for because there was no transition plan. You would have expected something like that. If it was supposed to be a survey done in late August or early September, he had no idea, so...
Madam Chair?
Dr. Mosley?
In terms of trying to... I just want to... I don't know if this is going to answer Ms. Raymond's question or not, but just something in terms of a resolution. We can... It sounds like there's an opportunity to do some calculation here. So, the question becomes, is this something that the board would like the administration to pursue? And does it warrant a collective vote? Does this go back to the Technology Committee so they can work on this? I just would like to get some clarification on that.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I think that this probably should go to a committee. And the reason why I say that is because this is kind of a difficult... This is a moving target. Our student body is constantly changing, you know. So, the data that we have, once we tabulate it, sometimes it's old. Before you know it, it's a new year. Seniors have moved on. And from what I understand, many of the teachers already use home computers. I know both of my... My son and my daughter have been in the high school. My daughter's still in high school, and they use the cloud. A lot of the homework is already used on the cloud. But, you know, the other thing is, there are some families that just don't have the resources that families like mine have also. So, I know we want to... You know, I think the Blizzard bags are a good idea and everything, but I think it needs to be looked at. I think we need to go to committee and really look at it and study it and see what other districts have done and how successful they've been done. You know, I think it's a good idea to have our students connected, most definitely. But I think it's going to take a lot of time and a lot of work to do this.
Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. Mr. Guarino raises an interesting point. Curriculum would be the committee to discuss, maybe the Blizzard bags or something like that, but we can't send it to committee unless we have the data.
Right.
We wouldn't have put it on the registration form unless the consensus of the board said we need the data. So, we've got it on those registration forms. It has to be tabulated so we can begin to know what direction to move. It may be an approximation, but we could find out whether it's totally impossible. It's not doable. But at least we'd have a better grasp on what connectivity our students have. Right now, we don't have any. So, we need the data, and then, if you want to send it to curriculum, if Ms. Van Twyver would like to discuss Blizzard bags or when she discusses textbooks, online textbooks, it would be useful data point for her committee to have.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver?
I believe the registration forms get entered into... The data that's on the registration forms gets entered into X2. Seems to me all it is is if it's actually on that registration form, then all it means is that when the people is entering the data, that you just run a report that says, "Okay, what's the results of this input?" So, I mean, I don't think it's... Could be that big a deal, but...
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. To Mr. Guarino's point about families maybe not having resources, that was the whole point.
That was the whole point.
We have 44% free and reduced lunch. So, the potential is there's a huge amount of kids that cannot access through a computer and broadband access, which is really the learning experience we want for these children. Now, there are programs with Comcast. If you have free and reduced lunch, if you're eligible, you can get a reduced fee for Internet service, and there are people, I think Comcast or people associated with them, from nominal costs will even help these families get a computer. So, there are resources in the community. We need to clearly understand what the need is and put something in place to make this happen for those families that need it.
Ms. Raymond and then Mr. Guarino?
Thank you. So, I think we kind of got a little far afield. I guess to go back to the original question, is this data that we have, does it ask about, do you have access to the Internet? Or does it ask, do you have a computer? Because those are two different questions. If I can access the Internet on my phone, I'm not doing homework on my phone. I'm, you know, doing other things. You can't do homework on your phone. Or I might have, you know, broadband access in my house but no ability to actually connect to it with a device that could be used. So, my question is, is there a question on the form? What does the question say? And can we have that data? And so, those are the questions we need to have answered so that we can then move forward with this, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, does anyone know?
For sure. I know it was supposed to be on there, but do we know for sure that it's on that form?
Dr. Mosley?
Go ahead, Mr. McKinney.
Dr. McKinney?
The data that's available now through X2 is limited to this student information that's collected at new registration and kindergarten registration. So, we can run a report next to it, and I've seen one, but it's limited to those that have filled out that survey. So, you're not capturing a picture of all 11,000 students. So, we would need another means to better assess access to technology.
Mr. Kaufman?
Move to direct the administration to develop a survey for subsequent review by the board addressing this need as discussed.
Second, thank?
I didn't think we were going to have motions at the work session. Quite frankly...
If I may, you said earlier when you started that we're going to run this just like a board meeting.
I meant we were going to respectfully raise our hands, and I would call on people as they were. And I expected them to speak when they were recognized. So, for me, I would rather see this go to the Technology Committee.
Point of order. Mrs. Oden, there is no Technology Committee that the board has. The board does not have a Technology Committee.
But the district does. The district has a Technology Committee, and that's what I'm speaking to, Mr. Kaufman.
I would rather the board create a strong direction that the technology can implement, the Technology Committee could implement the survey. But I think it's the board's... I mean, this has been on the table, as far as I'm concerned, since last June and even before that. So, I'd like to see action. Here we are in April. If we do anything, it obviously has to be done either we capture the kids at the end of the year or we certainly capture everybody when they return next year, which I think is too late. To get equipment in the hands of people who might need it, we could do that over the summer. So, I would rather see the board take the lead on this. If you want to send it, I have no objection to curriculum to develop the survey and get input and review the questions that might be on the registration form. I didn't see the question. That was put on the registration form, so I cannot answer Ms. Raymond's specific question about content. I have no idea what it is.
Dr. McKinney?
Madam President, I'd ask that you let us go back to administration and work with the principals and come back with a proposal of a timely means to gather all that, most likely in the fall. You're looking at the end of the school year. We have state testing going on. We're going to have some transitions. I think for parents' sake, it would be easier during the fall when a lot of forms are going home. In the midst of doing that, that we could collect the information and report back by September, October.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I have another... Thank you for that. I have another question about the follow-through with this because if we create a survey, if we create something else, what is the actual procedure or needs to have that tabulated? Is that something that could be... Does it require new programming in X2? Does it... Is it simply like collecting the forms and having someone spend an afternoon counting them? Like, what is the administrative task involved in completing this? Because for me, that would impact whether or not I think it is a critical need that we need before the end of the school year or if it's something that could wait for the fall. That would impact my decision-making process here.
Dr. McKinney?
That's a good point. I think we could incorporate that because that's usually the time of year where we're updating student registration, parent contact information, emergency release information. So, we probably could build it with what we already have now and run reports through X2. We just need a means to gather more data and get it back from as many families as we can so we get a significant mass. So, I would still like the opportunity to speak with admin and then come back with a proposal that would be administered in the fall.
Okay. Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. When the YAS people came to South, they pointed out that we have a membership in their group, and a part of that membership, we have the ability to have surveys without cost. So, the chairman of the group was telling us that we didn't need to contract out with UNH like we did previously. We have membership in there, and we can do a survey. If we can do a survey for free, maybe that is something that we'd want to put on our survey. We don't need to have it tagged to an individual who has or doesn't have it. We just need to know what the collective number is, whether it's a high number or a low number, and how many devices or how much of a problem we have. We bought, was it a social study or an English online...
Civics.
Civics. It was an online textbook. And we didn't even know when we were voting for that... And we didn't even know when we were voting for that, whether or not the kids could use it. So, the farther we delay, the more we're not making decisions with the right information. So, any way that we could expedite this, I think, would be to our advantage.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Yes, I like the word expedite. I think it's an urgent need that we need to find out. I think waiting until the fall to get the information would really prevent us from helping those students in need acquire that equipment in a timely manner once the semester starts. I think we've got, if we can get the data by the end of the school year, then we have the summer to try and find a way to get that equipment in here, or at least assist them in acquiring it. It may be the community can actually provide it. But I think sooner than later. Please.
Ms...
I have something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mosher.
Yes. You know, the previous figure, talk about getting the information in in September, I think that this is a good idea, because I think that the data that we get back will be much more accurate and be able to expedite the thing much more rapidly, because the data will be more accurate. Because like he said, you know, we're going to have changes that have been made in the classes, and then the number of children coming in, and what, you know, with all the moving about, and the fact that a lot of the paperwork will be going to the homes and finding its way back into the schools. So, not only will the information be something that we can use much more timely, but it will be much more accurate than if we go off on a tilt now and think that, well, we're going to be able to do this survey and rush it through and, you know, get everything done over the, so it's not going to be the way it works. I think that is a big mistake. And, you know, it's well intentioned, but it's a big mistake. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Is there, like, is there hardware sitting somewhere that's ready to be distributed? Because it seems like there's, this is a very large undertaking to find out how many students need this, and then to go ahead and get the equipment and then get it to them. I don't see how, even if we had the data right now, you would logistically have that happen. Plus, we're almost at the end of the school year. By the time you would get the data and get the equipment and get it passed in, it would be the end of school. So, it seems like it's a great idea, and I think there's another way to look at it. You could look at it as getting a head start for September to do it the right way all at once, instead of trying to rush it through at this point. Because just finding the equipment, I would imagine, is going to be a big undertaking. I don't even know if that's what the board's intention is. I don't know where this is coming from.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
So, there is no money in the budget to buy equipment for students who may need it. That's why I said what I did, that Comcast has programs for free and reduced lunch, and they also have a mechanism where people can get a computer at a very nominal cost. So, and the best we can do is point those people there, and maybe there are organizations in the city that could help somebody with a donation of the money necessary for them to acquire that equipment. But it was not intended that the board was going to take on any response. We would not distribute equipment. I mean, at least not in the mind that I thought about this. I'm just trying to find out how many. And I would argue, if the number varies by 10%, we still have something to work with. If it's, you know, if half our kids are free and reduced, so if you have 5,000 potential and maybe only 3,000 need it, well, we could certainly start making plans for the 3,000 and deal with the incremental in September that we don't know about. But that's going to take a lot of processing to deal with 3,000 kids.
So, if you're...
I'm sorry, Ms. Porter.
Okay. So, if you're just looking at putting systems in place where students who would need that would be able to get it, then the data, I mean, you're just going to, it's just something you're going to offer, and whoever needs it is going to go for it, and who doesn't need it is not going to go for it. Right? So, I think that getting the system in place where kids can access that is more important than finding out how many need it. Unless I misunderstood, I'm just coming into this now.
I would, did you call on me?
Okay, Ms. Van Twyver?
I would suggest that if we don't start looking at how many computers people have access to the Internet, or students have access, that we're going to be in a bind by buying books that require access to the Internet. And the sooner we do this, the better. IT costs are not going to go down, they're going to go up. And the fact that it was suggested that we could get these kids, the books, the computers is kind of a laugh, Mr. Kaufman. There are districts that have given their students, everyone got one, but we can't do that. So, and we spend an awful lot of money on IT right now. But if we don't start looking at this now, then we're just going to be in a pickle, I think.
Dr. Mosley?
More thinking.
Sorry. Were you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm done.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry. Dr. Mosley?
I just, I think we're getting lost in the context of what the survey is really asking. Couple of things. The Technology Committee just recently started to become operational. If you were, if we will recall, the committees were not actually active, I think, at the end of June and all the way up until the contract was signed, and that was, I think, maybe in February, I can't remember when the contract was signed. Second thing is that I think there is some questions around what is access and having a computer? And there's two different things about having access and having a computer. Most of our kids, maybe they don't have a computer as you, as we defined it, but they do have access to the Internet. And when I say access, I'm holding up my phone, because some of our kids, or the majority of our kids, will read from their phones as opposed to having an online subscription through a laptop. Now, these are critical questions that need to be explored with the right people in the room, technology, teachers, you know, our parents, and even kids. So, to kind of, you know, part of what I'm thinking, and it's like, what is, defining what access is for our families, defining what access is for our children, and that can be accomplished through some type of, you know, modification on that survey. How we phrase that can certainly be discussed at the Technology Committee. And then what I would, you know, make the recommendation is that, once out of that committee, we can talk to that committee, and then perhaps have those questions available to our students and our families at the beginning of the school year. That's when all of the information is the most, it's fresh, people are willing to do it, we have a good sense of our kids, and also, we prevent a little bit of redundancy. For example, if we know that in the fourth grade at Led Street, there's 200 kids, and 200 of those kids indicate that they have access to a computer, the following year, you know, we can look and say, okay, we know that there's 205 kids. Last year, there were 200 kids that had access. This year, we're just looking at those five kids. So, you can keep track of that data. To decide to do it right now, you will get some numbers, you will. But I can assure you, given the timing of the year, everything that's going on, this is the month of April, so we're in the first week of April, we have April break. You have two weeks in April, plus you have more board meetings. So, now, realistically speaking, you're in May. So, with May, that's the end of the year, and you have four weeks, you have a series of, we have our seniors and our high school people starting to transition out. So, you're not going to get the data that you're really seeking to explore, to analyze when you're looking at having a computer or having access to the Internet.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino, then Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you, Madam President. I am a little bit worried about the quality of the data that we will get. So, that is why I think it's wise and prudent to get a proposal from the administration, as Dr. McKinney had said he would put together, and also, as Dr. Mosley said, you know, they want to talk to the Technology Committee. So, I think, I think that it's best to have good quality data than just to have data. And so, I think that's very important.
Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. I think you have to understand, and I know it's the new administration, but the frustration of the older board members or the longer-serving board members, we were promised this data like a year ago, because we were reluctant to buy the civics textbooks, because we didn't know what percentage of the kids can use it. So, and I understand there's a natural delay in the turnover, but there's also our strategic plan. Unless we have even a ballpark knowledge of what the data is, it doesn't have to be precise, how do we even know where to plan strategically for our district? I mean, there's a lot of things that just a ballpark number would come in handy for as a board.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'm happy to hear that there are board members who want accuracy in data. I will just point out that this board only a few days ago approved a plan to cut off school on data we knew was skewed. So, here, a ballpark is an acceptable planning tool, and it's to get, as Ms. Porter, and I'm going to try and prarist phrase, I won't use your exact words, get the ball rolling so we get ahead of it, rather than, because then in September, when we get the data, oh, school's starting, and there's going to be a vacation soon, and then the testing starts in October, and we'll have another reason why we don't gather and move on this, and the kids will have lost the six months of access that they might need. So, I'm in favor of moving forward quickly. Thank you.
Ms. Van Twyver, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I do. Well... Yes, I did. I am willing to wait. It makes more sense to me that when they register for school is the time that you gather that data, and I'm willing to wait for that as long as it gets done. So, I would hope that the administration would come back with a plan to let us know that it would be captured in the fall, and how they were going to do it. As I said, every year, this slips, slips, and slips. And we've been asking for it, and the IT department, I believe, the IT, educational IT department, or that committee I served on, and they were also thinking about this too. So, I'm sure that they would be ready to move on it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Guarino, did you have your hand raised?
I just wanted to make the point that if you think data is skewed, and you make a statement that that data is skewed in the survey, you have to have evidence to prove that, and you have no evidence to show that. You just have speculation. So, when we have data, we, you know, data is important. The quality of data is important.
Ms. Raymond, then Ms. Porter?
Thank you. I'd just like to remind my fellow board members that this is a time to talk about the tasks in front of us and not get lost in the weeds and making accusations at each other. It doesn't move us forward. The second thing I'd like to ask is, when does this Technology Committee meet, and can we have a date to put on our list on when we will have a proposal from admin, so that we know that this is going to happen in September? So, if we knew when the Technology Committee was meeting, then perhaps the following board member, a board meeting after that, or maybe one after that, we could then say, this is the date that we will get a presentation about the survey, so that we know that it will be ready. Do we have any information about that? I would feel much more comfortable about using that as a, like prioritizing in that way, if I knew that we had it scheduled for a time for them to come back to us between now and September.
Dr. Mosley?
I would say that we can definitely have a proposal to you, probably within, I would say, I have to check when the Technology Committee meets next time. I just don't have that information right here. But I would like to say that by the end of the year, you'd have a proposal in terms of getting all of the data calculated and back for discussion to the board. It would definitely be after October. I use that as a parameter, because it's the October 1st count. That's when all of the kids are accounted for, according to our state funding and everything like that. So, it would be after October 1st date.
Ms. Porter?
I just want to say my getting a jump on it was not getting a jump on the data, it was getting a jump on a procedure to distribute things or get kids hooked up with technology. Because I do think that the data collection makes more sense in September.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know the Technology Committee met last week, and they have another meeting coming. It's just that we just were able to restart committees.
Yes. Do you happen to know when the next committee meeting for Technology is?
I can find that date for you and send it.
Send it? Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'd like to amend my motion to include a proposal from the administration by the end of June.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. Mr. Guarino, would you like to read the motion?
Do we vote on the amendment, or?
Well, we'll have to vote on the amendment first, yes.
Okay. What was the amendment? To have the...
To have an administrative proposal by the end of June.
Okay.
Could I ask, Dr. Mosley, is that going to be possible?
Absolutely, you'll have a proposal.
Okay.
Okay. So, what I have is a motion by Mr. Kaufman to direct the administration to conduct a student survey to identify home computer resources/connectivity, seconded by Ms. Ohensy, and amended to have the administration proposal by the end of June to the board.
We'll have to vote on the amendment first. Does everybody understand the amendment?
Yes.
Ms. Porter, you look a little confused.
Okay. So, we're not conducting the survey, we're just getting the proposal for the survey. Okay.
And what was added was the date?
Okay. For the proposal. Just for proposal. Okay.
Mr. Guarino, do you want to call the roll? Mr. Mosher, do you understand the amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
On the amendment to the motion, Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Ohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Six yeses and three nos, so the amendment, the motion is amended.
Okay.
The amendment passed.
The amendment passed.
Okay. So, now the amendment is part of the main motion. Could you please read the main motion?
The main motion, move to direct the administration to conduct a student survey to identify home computer resources/connectivity, to have the administration proposal to the board by the end of June. Want me to take a...
I was going to say, I'm not clear in the fact that we amended it to say by June 1st, but that's only the proposal.
I said the end of June.
The end of June, and that's for the proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the understanding is a little bit different than the language.
Okay. Could you read it one more time?
Okay. On the motion to direct the administration to conduct a student survey to identify home computer resources/connectivity, and to have an administration proposal to the board by the end of June. Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Odin?
Excuse me, just a minute, Ms. Porter.
So, I'm confused on, so you want the proposal by the end of June, but the actual survey would happen in the fall?
That's how I understand the motion.
Is that what it says? That's not what you said?
So, the motion should be to direct the administration to conduct a survey to identify home computer resources/connectivity, and the proposal on the survey should be to the board by the end of June. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Kaufman?
I think that's what Mr. Kaufman had said.
So, if Ms. Raymond were to suggest an amendment with that language, that could be used to replace the entire text that's currently on the floor, and then we could vote specifically on, you're a much better-worded example than what I have kind of put together.
Can I ask you, Mr. Kaufman, would you like to withdraw your motion, and we could have a new motion?
So, moved.
The second?
I want clarification, because I'm totally confused now. Here's the clarification I need to have. Here's the clarification I need to have. First, we voted on the proposal, to have the proposal by the end of June. I got that. The second piece of this is to have the survey done by the end of June. That's the confusing part.
No, no. That was not even mentioned.
Excuse me, just a moment, just a moment. I believe what Mr. Kaufman wanted is to have administration come back with a proposal by the end of June, but the survey would be done in September.
Okay.
Okay. So Ms. Raymond is going to make a motion and?
You just withdrew it. Everything has been withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to make a new motion. My motion is as follows. I would like to direct administration to conduct a super, sorry. I would like to direct administration to conduct a student survey to identify home computer resources connectivity in our students with a proposal for the survey language to be presented to the board by the end of June 2018.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Kaufman?
Yes. I would like to amend your motion to include that the survey will occur in October, which is what Dr., which is consistent.
Yeah, I would.
Oh, in September? Okay.
Excuse me, could we raise our hands, please, and wait until you're called upon? Ms. Raymond?
I would actually oppose amending that that way because what if we reject their survey question in June? I feel like our motion is to, we have a survey, here's step one, we get step one done, then we talk about step two. But with, I mean, I think the idea is that it should go out in September, but what if we're the problem? What if we're like, this is a terrible survey, we hate it, you have to redo it?
Any comment? Okay. So, Mr. Guarino, would you like to read the motion as?
I'm going to need Ms. Raymond to help me a little bit on this.
No, I didn't write it down. Okay. The motion is to direct administration to conduct a student survey to identify home computer resources slash connectivity.
Resources slash connectivity. Yep, I have it.
And to have a proposal on the survey presented to the board by the end of June 2018.
Got it.
I'd like to make a suggestion.
Okay, Mr. Mosher.
Yes, where you have the word connectivity, in front of that word, put internet connectivity. Be more specific.
Anybody have a comment?
I think it's a good idea.
Are you making an amendment to the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Okay. And could you, could you read us or tell, say, say your amendment again, please?
The amendment would be that in front of the word connectivity, put the word internet connectivity.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Mr. Guarino seconds it. Ms. Hohensie?
Couldn't we just have it as a friendly amendment if Ms. Raymond agrees, rather than two votes? That would eliminate it down to one.
I don't care. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Is there consensus on that? Okay. Good.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to take a vote on the motion, Ms. Raymond's motion, to direct administration to conduct a student survey to identify home computer resources slash internet connectivity, and to have a proposal on the survey to the board by the end of June 2018. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. The next request was to 26, 2018, Mr. Kaufman, a list of teachers and administrators and their credentials. And you do not need that from the office. Anybody can go to the website. We will get the website address from Ms. O'Gara, and anybody can look that up. You just type in somebody's name. I see Ms. Fitzpatrick shaking her head. Do you happen to know the web address? Dr. Mosley, do you think you could have Ms. O'Gara send that web address to board members? I know I've used it before, and I think it's New Hampshire DOE credentialing, but I'm not sure.
Yes. I mean, it has every single, I can have her send that and certainly make that part of the board packet and see if, you know, that can be available for everyone to look up people's credentials and actually at their will. So I can certainly look into that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes. My request comes from a concern that surfaced last year where we had a senior administrator that did not have the certification for the position.
Excuse me? Point of order? Point of order. Could we just say this? We have, we have two more pages to go. We, you wanted a list of teachers. We can do it ourselves. I know, I know you had a reason.
You gave me the floor.
Excuse me. And I said point of order. So I'm just trying to get through this. I'm not looking for your reasoning of why you asked it. I'm just trying to get through this. We have another meeting after this. I'm sorry, but I just think.
May I?
If it's the same thing?
No.
No. Okay. Then yes.
I'm not interested. I think it's great that I can look up individual people, but I'm looking at a much grander scale here. I want to be able to find out what they're teaching and what their certification is. And I don't know the names of the staff except to go through the budget book. So this does not, giving me the web address does not in any way respond to my inquiry. So.
Mr. Guarino?
I believe on our website that every school has a list of all the teachers. So if you want to know who the teachers are, I, you know, I've looked at Nashville High South, and I can find teachers in there and their email addresses. So I don't think that, I think that all the names of the teachers are listed for each school.
First, Ms. Raymond and then Dr. Mosley.
Yes, you can find them. There's links from the main website to each of the school websites. You can find a list of all of the staff, their names, their position, so that you could potentially contact them yourself if you wanted to. I mean, we shouldn't because we're board members, but general public can do that. I've done it myself before at my prior job when I had a question. I would think that if there was a question about credentialing and whether our teachers are appropriately matched, that's an HR question. If it needs to go to the HR committee, it needs to go to the HR committee, but I don't see directing staff to create a report when all of the information is available to us on the website, in our budget book. Other places isn't appropriate use of the board's time.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I can tell you in the past, Ms. O'Gara has provided this. When we had openings for principals, I asked her who in the district was certified for a principal, she gave me the list. So I know it's readily available, it's an easily run report, and it's, was not a burden when it was previously done. Oh, that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Van Twyver?
If you're talking about the staff listing on our website, don't always get all the data that you needed. Because I've looked for people's names and it doesn't come up, so I don't want to rely on that.
Ms. Raymond?
It's also in our budget books, which we have. Again, I don't see the purpose in asking staff to run reports for us when we have the information at our fingertips that we could look up on our own, if it's not a pressing matter. If this was something that we needed to discuss at the next board meeting, absolutely, I would say, let's save time. But we should not take people away from their assigned duties to do pet projects for board members. I just don't think it's an appropriate, I just don't think it's appropriate behavior.
I will weigh in. I think it would be a terrible waste of time, a terrible waste of paper. And keep in mind that what you get on one year, the next year, the person could have finished a degree, could have gotten another certification. It's very fluid and changing, so I don't think it's a real valuable point if there is a question about one person, and I understand what you said, Mr. Kaufman, about when we were looking for a principal, but that was maybe five or six people. And I think that would be a legitimate request, but when you're looking for the whole district and every teacher, I just think that is something that is not needed.
I was just going to say there were 40 candidates who had cert for principal. I thought that was great, and we had such a big pool of people.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to page two, and hopefully we can get through this page a little bit quicker than the first page. Two, 26, 18. It's a request from Mr. Kaufman, NIAS update, Nashville High North, including reports and surveys. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you. The committees have reformed. There's been a lot of work going on. The bulk of the work is going to be happening this spring and in the fall in preparation for the visit. So some of the things that Mr. Kaufman's asking for are in development currently.
Dr. Mosley?
The NIAS process is an accreditation process that is designed for the school. And it is an opportunity for the faculty and the entire organization to be reflective. All of these surveys are germane to the school, and sometimes using, the surveys are what I call snapshots. And so using a survey at this board level would just give you a slight insight, but my recommendation in, to, for this situation, for any NIAS situation, is that wait till that entire report comes back. You'll have surveys, you'll have people's voices, you'll have perspective, and then you'll have a better opportunity to have a real healthy and rich and productive conversation on the NIAS in general. I think, you know, for this request, I think it's premature. I think that when the, when the South NIAS report comes back, I think it's all fair game for the board to look at it, to discuss it, and also talk a little bit about planning for the subsequent years.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. In particular, I'm interested in the Endicott survey. I know that is part of the NIAS for South. They did the Endicott survey, 136 pages of a very well-done and professionally-done survey. I was, I recalled, I know that a similar survey has already been done, is completed at North, and I would be happy to receive that and let the NIAS documentation, you know, as it unfolds, come to the board. The NIAS for North, I'm sorry, for the Endicott survey for North, is a completed document. I'll be happy to change this request to just limit it to the Endicott survey that's already complete and just needs to be distributed to the board.
Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I was just going to say that when we did the accreditation for South, that we got reports and surveys as a link to the survey. So I would assume that this is just something that Mr. Kaufman just has to wait for, and that in time that it'll be there, and it will receive this information. Once they go through the process and they summarize the surveys and they take all the surveys, that we'll have this information anyways. So it's, I think it is premature.
Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I understand that you're trying not to burden the administration, but if this survey is complete and it's just a link or just an attachment to an email, I do not see where the harm is sending this to the board at this time. It's one survey, 130-something pages, and it's complete. The principal at North said it was complete. So what is the big deal about satisfying this request? Or is the purpose of this meeting to shut down as many as possible? Thank you.
I just want to respond to that. I don't think anything has been shut down at this meeting. I think people are trying to work together. I don't know what you don't see here, but I thought it was a fairly productive meeting, and people were being respectful of each other and listening to each other. So I'm sorry, but I fail to see where you're coming from. Dr. Mosley?
I'll defer. I'll defer to Donna.
Ms. Fitzpatrick? I have a point of clarification because I may have my dates wrong, but I thought the Endicott survey was conducted under a different administration so that the responses may have been very different to what current responses would be. Am I incorrect in that?
I don't know when the Endicott survey was administered to South. Do you, do you know, Dr. Mosley?
I do, I do not know when it was administered. I caution the board, NIAS is a process. That survey is just, just a snapshot of the bigger picture. And so to have that survey, you'll just get that, and then you're going to have a discussion about it? Because you'll have a discussion about it, but it won't really give you the full picture of what that survey's targeting. They'll look at that survey, which is a quantitative piece to the study, but then there's a qualitative piece. Does that data on that survey reflect the comments in the interviews when they go through the NIAS process? So you'll have the surveys, you'll have the surveys as you will have the surveys for the South. But I encourage you to look at those surveys with the full report so it makes sense. And North, at this point, is not in a position to, you can have the, I mean, to produce the surveys is just premature. I would advise the board to just consider, once you get that South report, you'll have that Endicott survey, and you'll have the full report, and then you can have a good discussion.
Mr. Kaufman?
My request for, was for the Endicott survey that was done for North, and it was completed in February this year.
I would just like to say I think it would be much more valuable looking at the survey, and I read the Endicott survey from South. I think it would be much more valuable if we waited until the second culture and climate survey was completed and we could compare the Endicott survey with the new culture and climate survey. I think that would be a lot more valuable for the board, so. Ms. Hohensie?
I would move that the administration send the Endicott survey to the board.
Second.
The motion is for administration to send the Endicott survey to the board?
To be clear, the one from North that was done in February.
Do you have that?
Discussion? Just briefly?
He would have a chance to speak to his motion first, and then we can have a discussion.
Ms. Raymond? I'm deferring my comment.
Okay.
Open the floor.
Thank you. I'm just curious about, have, so the survey was conducted in February. It's done. Do we have the results?
I have no, I don't know what survey, Mr. Kaufman or Ms. Hohensie are speaking of. What I do know is that we're going through the NIAS process right now. We just hired the North principal at our last board meeting. We have, we had just started the NIAS, we, you know, kudos to the South, but understand, we just signed our contract, what, three, three months ago or so? There were no committee works going on right now during that time. They stopped. So there's a lot of kind of information, there's a lot of stuff that we need to get going, and no one is saying we don't want to produce this survey. But for us to say that we produced a survey next week, I don't know if there's a survey. What I'm saying to you, I don't know if there's a survey for the North. I do know there's a survey for the South because South went through the NIAS report. I mean, process, excuse me. So if you give a time, you will be, you will be pleased with it. You'll be pleased with all of the information. And what happens in some of these requests is that you'll get the survey, but you'll be asking for more information, and then we'll say we don't have the information. And then you'll make a request for more and more and more, and then we get, we get lost in the weeds with requests. So I, I will make a, I would encourage the board to make a motion when the, when the NIAS- So I would encourage the board to make a motion when the NIAS report is complete. You'll have the survey, you have the report, you have the self-assessment, you'll have everything, and then you can have a discussion.
Anybody else?
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Can you read the motion, and we'll vote?
The motion to send the Endicott survey to the board, the one that was done for North On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
No.
Mrs. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Ohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Garino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
The motion fails. Seven noes, two yeses.
Okay, the next issue was on two twenty-six. It was requested by Mr. Hoffman, gaps analysis for I-Ready and Eureka Math. Mr. Kaufman?
If I may speak to that. This is the work that Kathy Wild did. We found it in the board last year, most informative, being able to get an idea of the gaps that individual students, that were identified on the behalf of individual students. It was also rolled out to grade, to school, and to district. So you could see, like, say someone didn't do well on, say, three-digit multiplication, and that was determined by one of the I-Ready or Eureka assessments. That went back and identified what the prerequisites were to that, could, you know, two-digit, even one-digit, and showed where the weaknesses were and made recommendations on curriculum for the teachers and the curriculum specialists to, you know, formalize and give to the students. It was a very visual way of looking at the assessment data in a manner that was very conducive to remedial identification and assistance. And I think it would be beneficial, very beneficial, for the new board members to see that particular data analysis tool. The board itself spent about at least three years developing it, Ms. Van Twyver. I mean, Kathy worked on that stuff for at least three years. So it was developed in-house, and I think the new board should have the benefit of knowing what tools we have. Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I guess I have a question about, I have another procedural question. Are you asking for them just to email this to us so that we can review it? Because I've noticed that there's a lot of requests that are kind of not as defined as would make me happy. So with this one, are you asking for them just to email it to us so we can review it on our own? Are you asking for it to be presented at the curriculum committee or a board meeting, and so it should be perhaps added to an upcoming agenda? I don't, I guess I'm confused about what exactly it is that you want them to do. Because this is interesting, I'm just not sure what the follow-through should be. And then my other side of that is, if it's something that should be added to an agenda, is that something that should be, you know, emailed from a board member to the superintendent, or should it be emailed from the board member to the head of the committee or the head of the board to say, hey, can we get this on an agenda, because it's something that we should review before the end of the school year, or before school starts next year, or whenever the time might be?
Mr. Kaufman?
Again, thank you to Ms. Raymond for asking me to do a better job of making my requests. My intention would be a demonstration slash presentation of the tool to the board succinctly. Sorry I didn't say that the first time. Thank you.
Dr. Mosley?
We've had lengthy discussions about I-Ready, S-Back, Eureka at the beginning of the school year with Dr. McKinney. We talked about trends and patterns. We talked about some of the challenges. We talked about the, there was a tutorial program that was created last year. We also, you know, most recently, we created that summer school program, and, you know, certainly in this request, there's a request for some clarification on that, which is fair. So we have certainly exhausted many discussions at the curriculum evaluation meeting around I-Ready and Eureka Math. We're happy to do that again for clarity. You know, at this point, all of the data requests, all the assessments were done through the curriculum evaluation. Ms. Van Twyver and Dr. McKinney are currently a part of that. So those requests should, you know, typically that stuff or that information was directed to that committee and subsequently put on that agenda for further discussion. And that occurred last, when I first started here and has continued as such.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Well, I'm not aware of this being put on the agenda for the curriculum meeting, but I would love to have it. At the end of June, we were supposed to have data from all S-Back, I-Ready, and Fountas and Pennell. I never can get that right. But that was data. This is a demonstration of the tool that Ms. Wild came up with to show where students are having problems with certain concepts, so. And I was not aware that that was going to be on the agenda. I'm sorry, sir.
Dr. McKinney?
Just for clarity, we spent probably three months earlier in the fall, speaking about student data and I-Ready and a number of things, and I gave a number of presentations. But in curriculum evaluation, we talked about coming in June for a full review of all our data, for steering committees to be putting forth a balanced assessment plan. We have a math steering committee meeting coming up next week, where they'll be speaking to using formative assessments, summative interim, and a variety of other assessments to get a picture of how all students are performing across the district. So I believe, I've been working towards that plan and having our data team put something together for June, so this piece, I think, would fit nicely into that. It would be part of that presentation in June. I understand the transition's different, but I think you'll have a better picture in June, and that'll also tie in the new SAS results for the state as well.
Dr. Mosley?
Just a point of clarification. What I was saying earlier is this, anything with I-Ready, anything with assessments should be directed to the curriculum evaluation committee for review and discussion.
Thank you. And Dr. McKinney, I do want to say, I know it's been very difficult, because you didn't have committees to work for for a good part of the year, so I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So procedurally, so that we don't end up with requests kind of like lost in the weeds, as has happened over the last couple of months, if a board member has a question like this one, Mrs. Van Twyver, would you prefer, if it makes sense for curriculum, for them to reach out to you first? Or would you prefer that it just be emailed to the board? I mean, I guess my question is, what should we do if I, for example, are like, hey, I wonder how things are going with I-Ready? What's the preference of the board to make sure that we don't have a request that just sits for six weeks where we don't know where it's going to go?
Well, as chairman of the committee, I would suggest you send it to me. And then we'll see, prioritize or whatever, but we're booked up now until the end of the year, so.
School year, yes, not calendar year?
Yes, school year.
Thank you. I will make a note of that.
We're booked until June. I mean, we've got topics until June. But this is not, if I understand, Mr. Kaufman's request is a demonstration of the program that was developed to show teachers where the students are not performing, that they have not gotten the concepts, which is, it's invaluable, it's invaluable. If that is correct, I don't know, you say that's correct?
Yes.
Well, that's a different subject than just talking about the data that comes out of it. The tool is really remarkable, but.
Mr. Kaufman?
The tool is in the possession of the administration. The curriculum committee doesn't have it. All the data is maintained by the district, the actual, I think it's mostly spreadsheet application that is used. So it's not something that could be distributed to us. It's really very centralized and literally owned by the administration, because the confidentiality of the data, all the student data that's there, that doesn't get distributed. So yes, it's a request for a demonstration and a presentation for something only the administration can provide. And I think it's worthy enough to have it at the board for demonstration. If, I'll just ask Mrs. Oden a question, if you'd like. Can we just move this to a new business item on a board agenda of the future? I think that would accommodate, that certainly would accommodate what I hope to accomplish. And I'm not specifying a date, I'm just making it very, for a new business item in the future board meeting. And that would certainly take care of what I was trying to accomplish.
Mr. Garino?
I think Dr. McKinney said that he was going to include it in a presentation for us, if I'm not mistaken. And also that we were going to, I would assume, I know you're busy in committee, curriculum committee, but it was all, you know, discussions about this would go there. So that's what I would assume would happen with this.
I thought Dr. McKinney had said it was going to be presented in June. You going over that?
So the presentation in June would be a reflection of the work our district data team has done around all student achievement data and a variety of assessments and a variety of subjects. It would not be limited to this one tool that was in use at a period of time. And that would also include recommendations for all subjects going forward, for assessing student performance, assessing the curriculum in a variety of measures, in a variety of ways beyond just I-Ready. So there are a number of new pieces that the state has put out, some benchmark and interim assessments that are free, that teachers have used since our February workshop day that I spoke about. So this could be a piece of that, but I was looking for something more comprehensive in June to present.
Then maybe you could just tie this into that presentation for those that want to see this. Thank you. Two twenty-eight eighteen, Ms. Van Twyver wanted the administration to provide the slides from Gail Casey of her presentation at the curriculum and evaluation meeting.
That, Madam President, that was supplied, but I'd like to remind the board and the administration that anything that is presented at a meeting should be included in the minutes of the meeting, okay? The public needs to know all the things. And even those people who, board members who are not in attendance of the meeting should have a copy of that. And I just want to remind the administration of that. And I did get that.
Okay. Thank you. Two twenty-eight eighteen, date provided was three nineteen eighteen. It was Mr. Kaufman, district office visitor log and badging. Okay. Two, Dr. Mosley?
What's the result? I sent an email to the board over Mr. Kaufman's request. Is that something we've addressed, and we want to just say that that's been taken care of?
Yes, it says it was provided three nineteen eighteen.
Okay.
Okay.
Mrs. Oden?
Dr., Mr. Kaufman?
The badging issue is not resolved, and I will bring, as unfinished business, at the board meeting next Monday, I sent Mrs. Oden a request. I'll be having some information about that at that time. The visitor log, I understand it's been implemented. I think that's great. As far as resolution to badging, I would say it's not resolved, and that there will, needs to be further discussion at the board, and that should occur in the unfinished business section of our next board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. The next information request was from Mr. Kaufman on two twenty-eight. Online list and link to all administrative procedures by department. That looks like a lot of work to be done by some people at district office, if that is to be done. I'm not sure that is something that should be requested by one member only. Ms. Raymond?
I'm going to say, I feel like a broken record here. This is a task. It is not a request for information, and I don't think it's appropriate for an individual board member acting alone to be directing the superintendent to direct his staff to do tasks. If as a board, we think that this is a priority for the district, and we would like the superintendent to prioritize, I'm happy with that. That's fine. But I don't think we should have an individual board member deciding that Dr. Mosley should reassign people or whatever. I also don't know if this is something that, as a board, we want everything to be online. I don't know, because I don't know what some of these things are. So I would say for thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, these are things that we ought to have a discussion as a board on whether or not it's things that should be online and how emergent, like, how important these things are for, as far as timeliness. Is this something that we want them to work on instead of something else? Is this something that we need to have a deadline for, or is this something that they're already doing and we just need to wait? I don't know, so.
Ms. Ohensy, and then Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you. We have a policy, BGD, Board Review of Administrative Procedures. One sentence, "The board reserves the right to review and rescind administrative procedures should they, in the board's judgment, be inconsistent with the policies adopted by this board." How do we even exercise, I mean, how do we even implement that? How do we even judge them if, I haven't seen them for two years, what requests I've made? Getting a procedure is very difficult. So it, we should get rid of this policy, too, if we're not going to look at them.
Ms. Van Twyver?
This has been batted around for quite a long time, and I've always been against it. I do not believe that we should have direct control over the administration and their procedures. I do understand that if they're in violation of our board policies, then the administration should do their review of their procedures to make sure that they are not. It, I'm not in favor of having them published or put on the website. We have our own procedures in the policies that are different than the administration procedures, and I think that we need to trust the administration, that their policies, their procedures are up to date and don't conflict with ours. We have more important things to do, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
This original request was made in August of 2016. Actually, that's not true. It was made in May of 2016, when Mr. Conrad announced his departure in the district, and we tried to put in place a transition plan for the next superintendent. And when that information was not forthcoming at the time, in August of 2016, I filed a right-to-know request to get that information, and some of that did come forward. But that right-to-know request revealed the fact that the administration, and as far as I know today, they cannot produce even a list of administrative procedures for any given subject. If you, when I've asked for, we've asked for it here. In addition, I will say that the financial operations document, I actually have a copy, this one is dated from 2001, is the last time this was updated. We did have a commitment from the administration, the superintendent, in fact, the chief operating officer, that this was going to be updated by May of last year. So it's 11 months late. We have, I haven't seen an updated document. And my problem is commitments. If we're given information that such and such a thing is going to be done by a specific date, I'm very patient, and I've waited for it. We, the accountability here is really lacking, and you cannot run $150 million We, the accountability here is really lacking, and you cannot run a hundred and fifty million-dollar corporation, which is really what we are, and not have documented administrative procedures that people know what they are. Employees, if it's just getting, how do I, how do I get a bus, you know, bus pass? Or how do I get a parking permit? Or how do I reimburse on mileage? Or whatever these crazy things are. If we're going to do diligence and you want to speak to governance, governance is in your policies, governance is in your procedures. Excuse me, having them clearly documented and available to the people that use them. Thank you.
I have.
Mr. Mosher, did you have something to add?
Yes, I do. You know, we have no business to be involved in the procedures that are up to administrators. If there is a conflict in the policy with the administration, the administration should be able to handle it on their own. As far as anything that has to do with the money or finances of any sort, that should be directed to the finance and operations committee. We have a regular book that is in effect at the present time, governing all of the, the things that are required of handling of the finances through the finance and the chief officer there. We've, we've been through that once before when Mr. Ryder was here, and we, we had to explain an awful lot to, for him because of his being from the UK. But we do have a lot of things that are already in, either in process, or if it's not in process, that are already approved for the administration. And if there should be something, like I said, that is in conflict to the operating policy of the district, then that should be addressed by administration, not brought before the board unless it was some unusual situation that may be criminal. So, I think we should forget about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Point of order?
No.
We've gone past the time limit for this meeting. You have another meeting scheduled at eight o'clock?
No, not quite.
Ninety-minute rule.
No, it wasn't scheduled.
It was six thirty to eight PM, was it not?
No. I'm sorry, I don't, was it on the agenda as that?
Yes. No. It was not.
No, just six thirty.
Six thirty to eight PM.
Okay. Could I get a motion to extend this to eight thirty?
Point of order, we didn't pass it for committees, and this isn't, is this a subcommittee? Or is this considered a full board meeting?
It's, I believe it's a full board work session.
Then it's a two-hour limit.
Okay, so.
But the agenda calls for, until eight o'clock, it's noticed until eight. I'm sorry, Mrs. Oden?
And that's why I'm asking to extend it to eight thirty, that would be two hours, and we have the attorney here to speak with us, and I don't want to hold him up too long.
I'll make a motion to extend for another thirty minutes so that we can continue to work on these items. I think that what we're doing is important. I think it's good to get some priorities, and I don't think it's, it's a good idea to have stuff just hanging out indefinitely. I don't think that's fair to the people making the requests, and I don't think that's fair to admin either, so.
I second the motion. I'm sorry.
No, could I ask that it be till eight thirty, because that would be the two-hour limit? And as I said, Attorney Bolton's here, so I don't want to hold him up.
All right, I'll withdraw my motion, new motion, to make a motion to extend to eight thirty PM.
Thank you.
And I second that, that motion.
Thank you. Roll call to extend until eight thirty.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The motion carries seven to two.
Okay, thank you. So, to finish up the online list and link to all administrative procedures by department, I, Mr. Donovan, I'm sorry, you were speaking.
Well, when it comes to procedures, simply because we don't have, I'm speaking to the financial procedures in a pretty package to put up on the website, we do have procedures, we're audited every year. The idea that you would take your financial procedures and put them up on your website, I have never in my life seen that. I've worked many companies. I would suggest if you looked at school district websites, you probably, you're gonna see policies. I don't know why we would want to put a procedure and how we process an accounts payable invoice up on our website. To be honest with you, might, if I was gonna try to sneak an invoice through the system, I, oh, that's how they do it. Maybe I should do it this way. So, I think some of this request, the idea of having procedures in a package, that's a nice thing to do. It's been on my list since this was brought up a year or so ago. It's just hasn't reached the priority level. There's been many other things, there's been lots of changes in management here, as we all know. This did not rise to the occasion that an individual member of this board feels it is. It's certainly nothing personal. I have been working in this and working hard and long hours for a while, and I really don't, it didn't reach my level, it didn't reach my boss's level where this became that important. It's important to one person on this board, and that's fine, it can be important to that person. But there are other things that put in front, and even when it's tied up and done, and like I said, it's on my list and I'll do it, I don't see any reason why you want to put that up on the website. Makes no sense.
Thank you. Okay. I don't, I don't know, I'm looking at one, two, three, four similar requests to update and post online procedures. So, I'm looking to see if anybody has a motion, whether these should be dealt with and this should happen, or people have concerns and feel it's not necessary. Ms. Raymond, do you, did you want to speak to that?
Well, I guess I think it comes back to a question of our procedures as a board. Is it appropriate, are we going to allow individual board members to make tasks for admin or for the superintendent to direct his staff? Or do things like this require a majority vote? And I think stuff like this would require a majority vote. And I would, I would posit that if we don't have a majority vote on these kinds of tasks, that they should be, well, I think it should be discussed, and if it's, if it's not a majority, it should be disregarded.
Ms. Hohency?
Thank you. I can understand why putting them online might cause people to be concerned. We have a policy that we're supposed to be making sure these administrative procedures are consistent with our board policies. I don't personally want to go through every single one of them, but there have been many occasions where I wanted to look up one specific procedure or another. I can't. So, I'm kind of flummoxed that this board just wants to shut down access to information. It wouldn't be a task if the administration, and maybe the previous administration, had kept up to date. There are a lot of procedures out there. There are procedures that go for, in the school buildings themselves, in addition to, you know, the list here. I would like to have copies of as many procedures as there are. I'm not asking that they go and make new ones, but if there's a procedure that you need for something that's happening and we request it, we should be given an answer. So, if you just think that we're gonna shut down this part of our responsibility and the board has the majority to do it, so be it. But I think it's, it's disappointing as a member of the board.
I got something to say.
Okay, Mr. Mosher?
I don't believe that, you know, shutting the access to these policies or procedures, I don't believe you're shutting them down, but they're still available, but they should be available only on a need-to-know basis. Because some of these procedures can be damaging in the wrong hands if they get somebody in the outside, in the general population that is as, like he said, you know, hey, now I know how they do that, how can we circumvent it? We don't want to do that, but what we want to do is have the procedures available on a need-to-know basis. And not that you're shutting it down, because you're not shutting it down. You're just making it, you know, if you have a need, you have business with the district or there's an educational question, the educational question should be sent to the school that's involved. There's high schools, there's two of them, or one of the middle or elementary schools. But not generally just to throw everything out and say, okay, here it is, here's our entire history, do what you want with it, it's always available. Well, it should be available, yes, but on a need-to-know basis. Not that we're going to put the, our CEO up there and have him direct it like, like an orchestra, we don't need that. But what we need is to have the, the needs and procedures available so that when they, is required, that they can pull it out and say, okay, this is what we do. And put it on a need-to-know basis. Some of these things have to be on a need-to-know. Let's do it like, like a military thing, that don't give out all the information, otherwise you're enemy, you know what you're doing. But to put it on a need-to-know basis so that the people that are involved in the procedures or the policies, they can get the information, but not just throw it out there.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Guarino?
I agree with Mr. Mosher. I think that's a wise path to follow. I, I do not want Ms. Hohency to think that where anyone is shutting her down, that she's not, that she's not able to do her job. If she does need procedures, as Mr. Mosher said, on a, on a need-to-know basis, when she has a reason, and I think she should work through the committees, you know, and that's what we're, there are nine people on this board, and we should all work together as a team. And if there are issues that come up where she needs procedures for a reason, you know, I think through the policy committee that she, you know, reasonably, reasonable request, you know, can be, can be filled. But I do agree with Mr. Mosher, a need-to-know basis is a wise way to go.
Mr. Kaufman?
So, let's say I agree with Mr. Mosher on a need-to-know basis, but if I don't know if procedures exist, I'd only be making a request that would actually take more time from the administration than if they proactively supplied a list, which was the first part of what I asked for. And as far as, that's the most simple part. If I don't know it's there, that's going to cause me to ask the administration for something, that's only gonna bog them down, which I could have found myself on the website, which is what you asked earlier this evening about looking up the certification of a teacher. It was okay in that situation to look up on a website an individual instance, but here, for our own edification and our own operations, it's not acceptable. So, we have to have some consistency here. At least ask the administration to provide a list of the procedures. If some are confidential, list it as confidential. If it's generally available, how to get a bus pass or whatever, at least point out that there is one, or refer them to the student handbook, which is probably how that's dealt with. But at least a list, because if not, we're going to burden the administration with administrative requests for procedures that may in fact not exist and further waste their time. So, actually, this helps the administration by providing proactively a list of procedures so that at least we know it exists, we can request it specifically or not. And actually, I think it creates less work for the district long-term. Thank you.
Ms. Hohency?
I'd like to move that we, the administration provide a list, just a list, of the administrative procedures, not the content. As Mr. Kaufman said, I think it would be helpful. It will narrow down what we're asking for, and I appreciate what Mr. Guarino said.
Excuse me, do you have a second to that? Before you start speaking to it?
Yes, second.
Okay. Now, you may speak to your motion, Ms. Hohency?
I think it would be simple, and I've got two procedures in here that I asked for. If we had a list, I might have gotten an answer by now, because they were just simple. I mean, it's like asking for a policy, you just get a copy or a link to, you know, the procedure you're asking for. But if we could just have that list, it would go a long way to expedite all of our questions in the future.
Is there any? I would say, I don't think you really need a list. I think if you, you ask somebody that, whether it's in finance or whatever, I think that would do. I don't, I don't think you need a list, that would be my opinion. Ms. Timmons?
She has a, I'm sorry, Ms. Hohency has a motion on the floor right now. I'd like to make a motion.
We have to vote on her motion. You do not have two motions on the floor. Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver, did you want to speak to Ms. Hohency's motion?
Yep, I did. I don't believe we need a list either. A simple telephone call to Mr. Donovan, say, hey, you got a, you got a procedure on this that I need to see? I mean, if we're allowed to call people directly now, that would be very, very easy to do, but I don't think we need a list.
Mr. Kaufman, did you have your hand?
I just, from Ms. Van Twyver's comment, thank you. We cannot directly call administration. Our policy is to go directly through the superintendent, and that's what the purpose of this list is for. That's just board policy. They ask us not to interrupt the work of administrators and principals and everything else.
Ms. Hohency and then Mr. Guarino?
Eighteen thirty-two, I put in, I mean, that's the number, I put in a request for the administrative procedure for nominating and electing student representatives to this board. If it was a simple, and they say they sent it to me, I got nothing, but I don't know if that's an email problem, but I mean, if it was something simple, it shouldn't be going on a list. We should get a response. But I don't know if there is, you know, what, what there is, if it's, if there is a list and it's on the list, I don't know.
Mr. Guarino?
I agree with Ms. Van Twyver. I don't think we need a list. Once again, I think we need to work as a team and work together, and I think something like this would be at the policy committee. We have so many meetings, we have so many policy committee meetings, and to bring it up, it would be so easy, and to go through the chairman, and it would go right to the administration, and we wouldn't have to worry about calling people or anything like that. Just, as long as we, you know, work together, I think that a simple, reasonable request would be fulfilled on a need-to-know basis.
And that could be done through the committee.
Exactly, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Kaufman?
Call the question. On the motion.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you to read it again, I'm sorry.
It's two, it's two votes, two separate votes. One, calling the question, and one on the motion itself.
Okay.
Sorry.
On, on call the question to end debate. Do we want to end debate on this motion? Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman? Yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
So, the motion carries a?
I will go to the main motion.
Okay, now we go to the main motion.
Okay, now we go to the main motion. On the motion, I will read it again. The administration provide a list of procedures. Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Oden?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Porter?
No.
The motion fails. Five, six, six votes to three. Six no's, three yeses.
Okay, we have six minutes left. Let's see if we can get through one or two more. 228, Ms. Hohensie wanted Mr. Lazard to return, speak to the board on the extent of upgrade needed to secure all schools, buildings with recommended upgrades cost, and if there is a limit to number of schools that can be updated under this grant. Mr. Lazard is coming to the board meeting on Monday night.
Along with Sean Smith.
Okay. So that should be taken care of. Let's see if we can get to another one. 228, Ms. Hohensie again, asked for, to plan a commemorative event as an alternative to the 314 and 420 student walkout dates. Leadership could get out in front of this walk, and what else? Dr. Mosley?
I have, well, 314 has passed, so now we're thinking about 420. And so I have had no information from any administrator, from any student, that there's any event planned for 420. Certainly, I will keep my ears and, you know, eyes open, but I don't know anything about that. I don't know what commemorative event that, you know, Ms. Hohensie was thinking of. We are, we were out in front of the demonstration that the kids planned and organized, and, and certainly, I'm very pleased to say that it was done safely and the kids returned to their classrooms, and, and that was the end of it. So I don't have anything planned to get ahead of the 420 event, because I don't know of any event that's planned. I'm certain, have you heard of anything? I mean, when I say like heard, I mean, not on Facebook, not on social media or nothing. It's working with the students that have come forward, working with our, our student organization groups within the school, having those face-to-face conversations. Nothing has come across my desk, and I can certainly follow up with the building principals if that is the case, but I haven't heard anything. Ms. Fitzpatrick, have you heard anything? Good conversations with the principals?
No, and I talked to Mr. Burns and, oh my goodness, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. Mr. Richard. Mr. Richard. On an almost daily basis. And if they thought that something was being planned, they would have alerted me that we had a, an issue that we had to plan around or fix or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Next one, let's see if we can do this. 228, it's a request from Ms. Hohensie and Ms. Van Twyver, provide the board with the instruction sheet to Kathy Wiles' budget tool.
Done.
It's done? Okay.
I don't remember receiving it, though. Did you get it?
We got a link.
A link?
We got an email with the link.
Oh, okay.
Okay, two minutes. Third page, 22218, Ms. Hohensie, cost of hiring an intern to fix NSD website minutes and search function. Does anybody know where that is?
I can, you know, follow up with Rick Farrenkopf to get some costs for that. I don't, I can make sure that he can follow up on that. So I will put myself there with Mr. Farrenkopf and get that out to the board.
Can we have a date when it would be available?
I would say two weeks.
Thank you.
If not sooner.
Two weeks. Three, request 35 from Mr. Kaufman, a list of 17 budget questions and six questions at a marquess salary. I think that was dealt with?
Just as a point, Ms., Mrs. Oden, the yellow ones are resolved.
Yep, the, skip the next one. Right, to the blue. 31318, Ms. Van Twyver, summer school program information. Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you have that?
I sent the PowerPoint and the other information that Ms. Van Twyver asked about today to Tara, and I believe she was making a copy for the whole board.
Yep. If that's the case, then it'll be in the board packet.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. There was this, the information requested was the amount of money that was contributed by each of the entities that were funding this thing.
It was for the 24 programs?
Yes, yes. I sent that to you the same time. Yes, I wanted to know, and there was one other request that I can't think of right now. But I wanted to know who, how much the operating budget was contributing, how much the YMCA was contributing, how much the Title I was contributing to this total cost.
Excuse me, I think your third question was the difference between the cost of last year's summer school program and this year's?
No, the other request was, the statement was made during that presentation that this program replaced 24 programs from previous year, and I wanted to know what the 24 programs was, because it's absolutely amazing that we had 24 summer school programs that this was replacing. Thank you for reminding me.
So I can get that information for you. I don't think we had 24 summer school. I don't know where that number came from. I don't think that's true.
Well, that was presented that night, because I, I gasped at it.
Maybe it did, but that, we certainly did not have 24 summer school programs last summer. I can tell you that.
But the other information should be very easy, right?
I have most of it, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
It is now 8:30. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at this point.
Don't move.
On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
You bet, yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
The mo, the motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at 8:32.